Okay, welcome everybody. We'll be back in the open session. Executive session. Okay, open comments.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to read the letter that the town administrator and I wrote last Friday that we sent to the petition people, the citizens' open letter, which was well done, and this was added to it. I'd like to put this on the record. President, Board of Trustee members, Northeastern University, Boston, Mass. Dear Mr. President and members of the Board of Trustees, the Nahant, Massachusetts Board of Selectmen are writing to you as President and the Trustees of Northeastern University regarding a matter that is a serious concern to both the Board and the citizens of our community. Specifically, we wish to vigorously oppose any expansion at your Nahant campus. The town of Nahant is a small seacoast peninsula with a population of approximately thirty-five-hundred people and has a geographic footprint of one square mile. Nahant is the smallest town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with unique challenges due to finances, severe storm damage, and aging infrastructure. At our March 5th, 2018 Board of Selectmen meeting, the three members unanimously voted our opposition to any expansion of Northeastern University's Marine Science Center and to write to you about this issue. Nahant has enjoyed a good working relationship with Northeastern for approximately fifty years. However, this relationship has deteriorated over the past two years. We believe our relationship may completely dissolve due to the contemplated expansion at the Marine Science Center. With little advanced knowledge, Northeastern has informed our community regarding the suspension, which, in our opinion, was poorly rolled out. The proposed sixty thousand square foot building with its roadways and lighting is not a fit for our scenic residential community. The construction has the potential to eliminate bird and wildlife habitats. A new entrance into the Marine Science Center will alter traffic flow. A proposed parking lot will increase traffic from cars, delivery trucks, and shuttles, thus putting more strain on our infrastructure. Also, your proposed project jeopardizes the fiduciary position of Nahant and may be detrimental to public safety, public health, and cause the inability to provide necessary services that the residents of this community deserves. For more than thirty years, Northeastern has pumped seawater through the Marine Science Center. We believe there should be a study to determine the impact that the seawater system has had on the local ecology. The seawater project needs to be properly reviewed, and the citizens need to be informed of any impact proposed. In closing, we, the members of Nahant Board of Selectmen, strongly request you halt all expansion at your Marine Science Center and study the proper impact of any seawater pumping system which impacts both the land and sea of our town. Respectfully submitted, Francis Burrell Chesley Taylor and Richard Lombard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Okay, thanks, Richie. Richie?
I just want to thank the Public Works and the Greenwich Contractors. They're doing an outstanding job cleaning up Tudor Beach already, and they did a great job on the Marjorie Park and that area where the loom put down and grass seed. And I'll be honest with you, I was very, very impressed. And I'm also very happy that I was down at the WAF when I was at Marjorie Park. And the WAF project looks like it's coming to an end, thank goodness, after a few years. But, you know, of course, I didn't look at it. Someone, our engineers have to go down and double check and make sure that the checkoff list is completed, you know, and things. But it looks good. I mean, it looks going down the concrete and the hot top. And I know they were moving the pram rack over when I was there. So, coming along, so, you know, without us, you know, superintendent of Public Works. And thanks to you, Jerry, you're checking all these things. And I heard you were down there already, introduced yourself down there to the team. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I want to say.
Okay, thanks. All right. Well, again, a letter today, I'd like to read. Dear Mr. Burrell, I'm writing because you have expressed interest in our municipal vulnerability preparedness program. Please see the invitation below. We hope you can join us for this announcement of new emergency funding to support significant expansion of our MVP program grants to communities across the Commonwealth in 2018 for planning and implementation. You are invited to join Lieutenant Governor Karen Colito, Energy and Environmental Affairs Secretary Matthew Beaton, and local legislators and city officials. It's tomorrow between nine and ten, so I'll take some time off and go over and see it and get involved in it and get going on it. This is all about the sea level rising. So, I don't have to go too far. It's only a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's a review. I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's a review. So, I've been, I signed up for this because I'm a firm believer that the sea level is rising. I mean, it's pretty obvious. And this is going to give us technical assistance and grant, grant money to really beef up the coast because I think we're going to be in trouble. And I know that Tudor Beach, over near where Mr. gentleman came and had some concerns there, Aldrich, I think, yeah, Mr. Aldrich came. Can you give us grant money to fix that up, maybe beef it up, get the wall higher down on Castle Road, that area, Fox Hill, and just all around town with the ball and the squads? So, I'm happy to do it, and I'm going to do it tomorrow. So, that's it.
That's very good because we definitely need it, you know, the new seawalls.
Right.
We've got to take these seawalls up a little higher, and this is set one. And also, request what weather put in, you know.
Yeah.
What do you call those? Breakwaters?
Yeah.
That'd be huge if we can get breakwaters to break, you know, you know, at Shot Beach, breakwater out there and Tudor Beach.
I have my to-do list. I was looking after Tom, when things settle down, to get ahold of Congressman South Molton's office. I'm trying to work, I'm working, that's on my to-do list, I promise.
That's huge because...
I'm going to work on that.
They're going from Miami to Maine, and Congress has voted billions of dollars. And they've actually started working in New Jersey, Delaware, and as they come up the coast, the city of Boston's going to get involved in this because they need some strength and hire those seawalls. And we definitely need it because Enzo's right. The high tide, years ago, even at Shot Beach, we used to have sand, at least twenty yards of sand, there was no water, you know. Now, high tide comes right up to the rocks. There's no, there's no space. So, you know it's coming, and same thing at Tudor Beach. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
One more. I'd like to thank Mr. Perry for all that he's done for the town in two weeks. Two and a half weeks. I actually, this, I actually went down Fox Hill Road and saw two brand-new telephone poles. And then I saw another one that, and it's something we asked for two years ago. It's amazing. The broken poles are gone.
Yeah, it's not working.
You know, it's not working.
It's because he lived out there.
No, no, because I go down there all the time.
Well, that's good. There used to be twenty-two double poles, and they used to send us a list. Mr. Nagel, who used to walk that area, walked the whole town, and he used to give us a report. I think maybe what we should do is just double check what's left, you know, if they put...
I'm going to report on that tonight, too.
Oh, good. Excellent.
All right. Thank you, anyway. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next. Appointment of a liaison committee between the, well, there's no citizens here, so we'll skip right over to citizens.
Want me to do that?
Okay. Appointment of the liaison committee?
Yep.
Now, this is...
I move...
Okay, you're going to explain it, too, right?
Yeah. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to establish a five-person Northeastern University Liaison Committee as follows. There shall be a five-person committee appointed by the Nahant Board of Selectmen. Said committee shall be vested with the responsibility to review the development associated with Northeastern University at East Point and to recommend to the Board of Selectmen appropriate action that serves the best interests for the citizens of the town of Nahant. Said committee shall be responsible to advise and recommend to the Board of the Selectmen the following: to recommend appropriate legal action necessary to protect the quality of life for Nahant residents; to coordinate the distribution of funds to the town of Nahant government, consistent with MGL Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three-A, with recommendations to the Selectmen on how to utilize said gifts and grants; to recommend strategies for policy decisions for town meeting, actions for the Board of Selectmen, or any other governmental officials associated with the town of Nahant; to recommend vendors necessary for legal appraisal or other services required to coordinate decisions that serve the best interests of the town of Nahant; to develop appropriate timelines and/or deadlines necessary to meet the objectives of said committee, and to report to the Board these suggestions; to ensure that the town of Nahant does not incur a financial deficit associated with this endeavor; to ensure that strong communication exists between said committee with the Board of Selectmen and town administrator, and that the Board of Selectmen have the authority to change the mission of the committee.
Second. Second. Okay. Good discussion.
I think it's a great idea. I think it'd be good. It'd be very helpful to the Board.
I do, too. I think it's very helpful.
Okay. Do we have the names? Do you want to read the names, Ron?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest you establish the committee first under Mr. Taylor's motion, and then the second portion of this will be nominating candidates for the committee.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I have a list here.
There's a second part. Five P.
Yes, we're going to come to that now, too.
Want me to, oh, wait?
This, these are the, that's the P. Mr. Chairman, I can report to you. It has been suggested to me by certain residents of the town who have been interacting with my office, who would be very interested in serving on this committee. Those names are on the paper. I just forwarded to you. I would recommend to the Board that you nominate those five candidates if the three of you are comfortable with those names. I think they're good candidates and would do a good job. I would recommend that the Board nominate and appoint these five individuals to your new committee.
Okay. Want me to read them?
Sure. Richie, you'll second.
Yep.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint the following to the Northeastern University Liaison Committee. Jeff Musman, Tri Mountain Road, Mark Collinon, Ocean Street, Paula Devereaux, Intervale Road, Nancy Cantelmo, Cantelmo, Summer Street, Ken Corangelo, Willow Road.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for doing this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I will contact these individuals post-haste, try to get it coordinated, get them set up in a meeting, and get them going with the town clerk and the open meeting law requirements and all those factors, okay?
Thank you.
Roger, quickly?
Mr. Chairman, if I could suggest, I do have a few things to report to the Board that maybe you want to do first. You have the green that would fall into this category that I handed to you a couple minutes ago?
Oh, yeah, the green community.
Yeah, the green communities. I would suggest you, you wanted to do something with that.
We have an opportunity to participate in the MAPC service. It's, they'll come in and they'll inspect all our lighting and seventy-five hundred dollars, man, that they're going to, that they're going to do for free, basically. So, I'm on that committee. I went, we had a nice meeting the other night, and we need to sign. And I made sure that the Board of Selectmen voted on it, to sign it, not just me, so...
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could suggest to the Board, the Board would be wise to accept the grant under Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three-A, and then if the Board accepts it, then we'll sign off, and as you indicated, but I think it would be wise to have a motion to that.
So, move we accept the grant.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Only you have to sign it, Jerry.
Correct. There's a grant issue on that, and I, as I understand, I'm going to recommend that Diane Montieth coordinate this project.
Yes, let her do it.
That's right. I'll put her name onto the report.
Sign it. She's probably going to be walking through the door any minute now.
We'll get it to her, but I'll get, this will be done paperwork tomorrow, okay?
Shut that light off.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some reports on, updates on various matters to the Board, with your permission?
Yes, sure.
On Tuesday, last Tuesday night, I met with the new Town Administrator Search Committee. They've established themselves. The chair is Mike Manning, the vice chair is Jim Ward, and the recording secretary is Jen McCarthy. Seven of the nine members were there. The town clerk came in and did her duty, as always, giving them the packets on open meeting laws and things of that nature, and she swore them in. I did present some information with them and talk to them quite a bit. We coordinated literally, the meeting was Tuesday night, and I can tell you, by Wednesday, by the close of business Wednesday, we have ads that have gone out. And if you'll be with me for a minute, I'll have that for you. We do have the ads going out, is going out to the MMA, the ICMA, the Beacon, the Boston Globe, the Mass Department of Employment and Training, and it's also on our website. So, we have, I want to thank Mary Ellen Schulman, who did a great job of really hustling on Wednesday to make this all happen. The ad is, I have at least one copy here I could share with you. You've seen a draft, I saw the Board have a draft. We did some minor changes, but I would also tell you that what we also included, it's on the website prominently, so anyone can see it, and the MMA website, you can click on it and get to it at the suggestion of the search committee. We also have about a four-page job description of the duties and responsibilities which we have, which is also on the website. So, any candidates who want to apply for this will see a pretty detailed job description, which you can look at yourselves, you can click on it and look at it yourself. So, now, the chairman, Mr. Manning, came back and saw me on Wednesday, and he has requested a joint meeting between the search committee and the Board of Selectmen to allow the committee to hear from the three of you what you three are looking for in your next town administrator. And further, he suggested, which I would say is a good idea as well, that we allowed that same evening, like a public hearing, to let the residents come in, town employees, department heads, to speak, more so for the search committee, but obviously for the Board of Selectmen to hear it as well, because, as we all know, under your Town Administrator Act, it's a dual role. They're going to nominate or recommend a certain number of candidates to you, then obviously the three of you will select your final town administrator. So, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we need a motion on this, I can, I will set this up sometime after town meeting. The deadline for the names to come in will be June 1st. However, we did post it that the position is open until filled, in case we stumble into a problem after June 1st and you don't like the candidate you hear there. So, I was having, I know Mr. Taylor said he's served in several of these types of search committees. I've done a few in my own hometown, but I thought they did a great job. I, my compliments to all of them for getting going, and I can only tell you, we scrambled yesterday, and everything's done, and now we're going to start accepting applications, hopefully over the next four or five weeks up until June 1st. So, I was very pleased with the way the entire process went. So, we have that going.
Terrific.
Richie asked a week or so ago at the meeting to send a letter to Sheriff Coppinger, thanking him for the work they did down at the golf course. I'm here to report you that that letter is gone, and it's in your folders, and you can see that at your leisure. I also went down to the golf course with the police chief. He was kind enough to escort me around because he has more knowledge about what's going on than I do, but I can report to you that the work going on in the pro shop is, they're probably close to done now. I'm happy to report, they never had to shut the building down after the storm, they kept open, and I think that was a good thing for the golf course. The gentleman, Anthony, I don't know his last name, I apologize, but...
Dee Dominicus.
Dee Dominicus, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a long conversation with him down there. He was appreciative of the town kind of being on top of it a little bit. He did request of me, though, he indicated that he was concerned in talking with turf management people, that because the seawater got in seven of the nine holes, he had to get fresh water on these greens to try to protect them. So, we immediately contacted Tim Low and his people the very next morning, put the meter in there, opened up the water thing, so the golf course has access to fresh water, and I think Anthony's working on that to try to protect those greens. Traditionally, I guess they don't turn the water on for another three or four weeks, but we kind of expedited that to protect the greens down there at Kelly Green. So, I want to let you know over on top of that a little bit.
He's done a phenomenal job down there.
Yes.
Being underwater, and Anthony's a worker, and you can just tell that everything looks really, really good. I know he was irrigating everything.
Right. And they cleaned up. The biggest challenge was the ninth hole right along Willow Road there, where the storm came in, and the sheriff's department, and Anthony and his staff, they've done a pretty good job down there. I agree with you, Enzo, they really did well, and they should be commended for that. So, I want to just shout out Tim Low. He immediately went down and turned that water on, got the meter in, so the Public Works did a good job, too. I'm sorry, Rich, question? Did you have a?
Yeah, I, I think, to follow that up, as I was down the golf course, and I was playing around, there's several holes where the trees have fallen.
I believe some of the trees, I think it's the sixth hole anyways.
The Public Works needs to go down and clean all the, there's certain holes, you know, they're really, you know...
I talked to Anthony about that, Rich, a little bit. We're trying to still clean up the town, and I told Anthony, once we kind of got the town squared away, we would try to see if we could do something along those lines, but I was holding off on that a little bit.
If you send the Greenwich down, he's got crews, you know, cutting...
Well, that's an idea. Okay.
Send Greenwich down, they'll cut up all those trees, and take the branches up, and I think it'll be, you know, very helpful. And then down the road, when we stop planting new trees, get a plant to land.
Okay. How about we start with clean, I'll get Greenwich down there. How's that?
Well, you need to clean it up.
I'll work on, I'll get, I'll work on that. Okay.
I think six, seven, five, four, three.
Yeah. I know, we'll look at it. We'll take it. That's a good idea. I don't know about the Public Works, they're a little stretched, but Greenwich, I think, can help us. No, Greenwich can help us, though. That's a good idea.
He's good. I tell you, I've never...
He's done a great job in the town, yes.
What a decision that you made on that one. That was huge.
Well, I don't know if I made it personally, but we're going well. That's a good thing.
Well, I tell you, they, they work, I couldn't get over Willow, Marjorie Park...
Right.
And Tudor Beach. I mean, they got it, we got it, we still have repairs down at Tudor Beach, but, I mean, boy, they're after a good start.
Right. The next thing I'd report to the Board is next Thursday, I had a conversation with the town moderator. I guess due to scheduling, they'd like to, I guess, you folks do an annual meeting where you kind of get together and go over the warrant and the votes and things of that nature. So, that is for next Thursday at 7:30. I will post and take care of that for the Board, but the moderator will be here, and I guess the finance committee, you guys know better than I this stuff, but...
Yeah, we usually do the week, well, the Thursday night before the...
Right. There's a scheduling conflict with some people, so unfortunately, if it's okay with the Board, if we could do that next Thursday, I think it'd be a good idea.
It's a good chance for us, if we're going to speak in opposition of something, articles that they know and the moderator knows.
Yep.
And the FinCon's there, so they know that if, you know, someone wants to speak, and we usually tell them at that point.
Right.
But I think with the balanced budget you've submitted, and I think we should have a pretty good town meeting. I mean, we...
I hope so.
We need, we need people to show up. I mean, it's, you know...
Yeah. I need to comment as far as the town meeting, and I want to shout out to the town hall staff here. They've been, I mean, I just, in two weeks, I can't tell you how much they helped me, and really, I would have never done this without the staff. I mean, all of them were phenomenal, and one of the things I talked to Mr. Taylor with the other day, I'm going to start focusing on a lot of the positive things that's going on around here, because there really is an awful lot of positive things that are going on. I understand we have challenges in certain areas, but I'm going to be pushing the three of you and the town as a whole that the town needs to know a lot of good things are going on in this community, and I hope that the taxpayers, the citizens, understand that good stuff is going on through the Board, through the staff, and the various departments here in Nahant. I want to report to you on the DPW search. As you know, we put out ads for, we combined the superintendent's position with a new town engineer role. We have, as of, and I didn't have a briefing on it today because I wasn't in the building, but as of yesterday afternoon, I know we had at least four candidates apply. Two of them, though, fill the role of, have engineering background. Where they live could be logistically issues, I'm working on that, but given that, I strategically decided to just put it in the MMA, but given where we're at tomorrow, I'm going to work with, again, Mary Ellen Schulman there, I've decided to put an ad in the American Public Works Association. I think we may get a bigger bang for our buck trying to get out to, that's the engineer crowd and the Public Works crowd, and a little different from what's going on in the past, trying to reach out for somebody, but we'll be doing that as well, and we still have that as an open, like the town administrator, that's open till filled, so we have some flexibility on that. I have also personally been reaching out to numerous, my network out there in municipal government and other municipalities and getting the word out, we're looking vigorously for new superintendent of Public Works, and again, I know he's not seeing this, but the superintendent in Beverly has been very helpful to me personally, is trying to help the town out indirectly here, and make it cost me a lunch on this, but that's okay, but he's doing a great job. So, we'll see how it goes, but, you know, I would like to see a better, more of a pool for that, but we are working on that as well.
After this is over, Jerry, make sure we write on a thank you note at the end.
I'll take, absolutely, yes. Thank you. The last thing about polls that I told you I reported, we talked about the double polls that you were talking a few minutes ago. I know, Enzo, you talked about the poll on Brucie Hill Terrace, I think you called it number eight. We did call that in to Verizon and had a polite but firm conversation about trying to, I can't guarantee we're going to get success, but we had the same kind of dialogue about trying to get our ambulance back, so we're trying to do that kind of a strategy. And we did have a conversation about polls in general, and you've got to help the town out, and so we're working with them. You know, I can't guarantee results, but I can guarantee we're making every effort to make sure that these polls throughout the town are properly taken care of. Mr. Chairman, I also sent you an email the other day with about eleven ticket items that were also accomplished. I don't think it's necessary to repeat a lot of that, we'll be here all night, but it goes back to a lot of good work is going on by the town employees. They're doing a great job, and I publicly thank all of them for being so good to me and being so good to the Board and the townspeople. A lot of stuff is getting done in a very hectic period of time. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to report to you on, updates on various projects.
It's amazing how in three weeks' time, you've gotten all this done.
The town employees got it done.
Oh, and the town employees?
Absolutely.
Any direction you say?
But to be honest, it's since you've been here, you know...
It's the town employees.
I've known you all my life, but it, you've got things moving, and I know that there are some great people here in this town. We all know them. We grew up with most of them, but they needed to get, you know, direction.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for that.
He only works two days a week.
Yeah, I wish that was the case. I do wish that was the case. I'm going to send my wife over to see the three of you guys.
No, no, I don't, I'm all set.
Tell you, the employees, especially the town hall staff, are excellent.
Absolutely.
They can work on their own, you give them a direction to do it, and they'll complete it. All of them are very, very, I appreciate it very much, and they, you know, they've just, they've been through, you know, a change, a lot of changes with two town administrators, and so this is you. You've been, you've been a bright light coming in.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have two things for you, you might want to, I just want to bring it up.
Sure.
There's two areas of concern, and my, my problem is the Nahant Housing Authority Homes, the houses.
Yep.
If you can meet with that chairman, I know she resigned, but I don't know who's talking, but it just seems that their, their homes and their houses are a mess, the outside, and they're really...
This is the housing authority you're talking to?
Yeah, the housing authority.
Okay.
But it just seems that their, their homes and their houses are a mess, the outside, and they're really-
This is the housing authority you're talking to?
It's the housing authority, yeah. We can meet with him, someone, just tell him that.
I think it's David, David Wilson's the acting administrator.
Well, if they can meet with him and just get to clean up their area.
Okay.
The other thing is, I, but, you know, when I go around, Bass Point, over in Bass Point, the Coast Guard Housing. If they clean up their area a little bit, you can tell that Nick Amisla-
The hall company there?
The hall company, but there's a, he's away, but there's a manager.
Well, I can, I, there's something, I apologize, I haven't reported this, and Enzo knows this, too. Enzo and I, a couple of weeks ago, went over to one of the, one of the buildings opened up for rent.
Right.
What we did do is, I authorized to clean it up, fix it up, and I told him to get someone there by April fifteenth.
Right.
So, I, I'll be frank with you, I don't know where that stands. It's right around the corner here.
I know, yeah.
But we did, and I did meet with them. We had a conversation about receivables.
Call over there, give it a recommendation for someone to move in there. And I think it's Paul, who's a child.
Paul Hamroth, yeah.
He's the guy. I think he'd be the one. But he mentioned that there's a handicapped person and kids coming, moving back in.
I think so.
Into that unit, once he, once he gets it fixed up. And he's on that. I know he's on that. But I just, just sometimes the areas, you know.
I will reach out to them again.
Just, just kind of, you know, just kind of cleaned up a little bit.
Yeah.
Spring coming.
The only thing I will share also, that Enzo knows this, because he was there in the room, you know, I'm always looking at money. That's just my nature. But we talked about some business practices that I wanted the hall company to improve. They agreed to do it, to make sure our receiv-, we don't have a lot of receivables out there. And we also put in, I wouldn't call it super aggressive, but certainly a rental fee that is consistent for the best interest of the finances of the town. So, we, we did all those things as well. And Enzo was there for the whole thing. He saw how, what we did. So, I thought that went well, too.
Good. And do we have any, any, any feedback from the committee? Have you heard anything from the-
No, I, I'll be honest, that is not one thing I've ta- I'm, I'm hoping after town meeting, some of these things that we're talking about, I'm, I, believe me, I keep my list here.
Yeah.
I'm really focused still, even though I think we're doing an awful lot, but I still am focused on town meeting and make sure we get a budget done and get it done properly. So, after that, I hope to have a little more wiggle room to tackle some of these things. But I promise you, every time you give me a little task, it's on a piece of paper, and I haven't forgotten it.
That's good. No problem. Take your time, Jerry.
One more plus, because I walk the dog that way. This brand-new ambulance went by me the other day, Mr. Perry.
I'm glad to see it in town.
Good job on that.
No, that was the fire chief.
Good job, okay. Good job with the chief.
The chief and the firefighters who were all involved in that, no, that belongs to them. We, we had a conversation, granted, but Chief was aggressive. Chief went out, and Chief got it done. And he's, you know, he's worked with those firefighters down there. And I personally went into the ambulance to look at it myself, just to make sure it was there, so.
Very nice.
No, I'm very happy that ambulance is back in town. I agree with you on that.
Thank you to everyone who helped.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the chief, he's doing a great job.
Well, I tell you, even with the, the, they borrowed ambulances.
Right, right.
From a personal perspective, they're fantastic, the firemen and the EMTs, and even the ambulances they were using. It was very, I tell you.
A little bumpy?
No, no, it was, well, they, they did a great job. I, you know, I, I'm just gonna tell you, it was, what a team. You got a good team. We got a good team in this town.
Yeah.
Employees are a good team, the police, fire, Public Works, Town Hall staff. We got a very good team. I mean, they, their performance is outstanding. I wish I could get up and give them more money in the contract somehow, but it is what it is.
I do, too, by the way.
No, no, I know, but down the road, in the past, they've always worked with us. So, when it does free up, we, we should think of these hard times now where they receive very little and take care of them. In those days, when we have some extra cash. Okay, that's our, that's our, Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Nice, nice report, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, very nice, thank you.
We have some, a bank.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a Historical Society Vintage Ball, five nineteen eighteen, from six PM to ten PM, Town Hall.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve Culture Dance Academy Annual Show, six one eighteen, from six PM to eight PM, Town Hall.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve an Earth Day Celebration by Keep Nahant Wild, four twenty-one eighteen, from noon to four, Large Park.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business? Any new business? Hearing none. We're gonna go to the closing announ-, announcements. Before I do that, the, okay.
I see.
Just for the closing announcement, sorry. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Cape Hays Day. And the metal recycling will begin April twenty-eighth, the end of town meeting, eight AM to twelve noon. And the spring leaf pickup, April seventeenth, twenty-third, and the thirtieth. And one other thing, we talked about planting trees around town.
Can I report on that, Mr., with your permission?
Absolutely. That's why I, I kind of prompt.
That's a good, it could have been under the update. As you know, Vi Patac came in and, and asked to plant some trees around town, specifically in the lowlands area a little bit. I've had some feedback from some of the residents down there for two concerns. One, as we all know, the, the challenges they have down there for the drainage that is occurring. There's some concern about some of the residents, would the trees potentially cause drainage issues? And secondly, kind of maybe a bigger thing, a lot of the residents were concerned that the trees would block ocean views, thus, thus maybe reducing the property values down there. So, I did try to call Ms. Pytek up, couldn't get through to her. I did send her an email asking her to meet with me, and let's meet with the residents down there to see first what's going on, let's communicate a little bit better. And I think the Board, I'm assuming, I don't want to take it upon, certainly wants to keep the neighborhood down there happy. We don't want to see property values reduced and whatnot. So, it's a work in progress. I mean, we're not saying, we're not putting trees, but we aren't saying we are. I didn't instruct the Public Works people to hold tight until they heard from me on that. And I think they reached out to the chairman about this as well, too. And I think even Mr. Taylor, as well, maybe, probably, I know even Richie got a phone call, I don't know. But, so the bottom line to it is, I'm gonna try to work with her and the neighbors to try to make sure everybody's happy. So, I'm gonna stay on top of that.
Right. And one last thing, which I just want to point this out, that we got-
Okay, yeah, I, I can say one thing.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want the path between Ocean View into Bailey So Park, the roadway there.
Yep.
They need to drop some divot pack or something. There's big-
Oh, divots, okay, all right.
And water there, and I just, it, it'll be easy, you know, nice and smooth, and maybe rolled if Grenice has a, has a, the stroller there with the-
I know what you, I know what you mean, yeah.
And then because people walk that, the other side is next to the first hole, some of those trees are overgrowing. They need, probably need to be cut down just to open that path up a little better along the fence next to, next to Coast Guard Housing.
I think we have more, okay, let, let me, okay.
You can look into it.
Let me look into that. I'll look into that. I think we do a little bit more on that road thing. The trees could be another issue. But let me look into that, though, okay? Okay.
And the very last thing, I just want to report that this is a very impressive petition that Keaton Hot Wild presented to the President of Northeastern University. They had a bound, they made copies, and they presented us with one tonight. I think there's seventeen hundred signatures on it that say, no, no more. And they've done a great job. They work really, really hard. Each, each section has its own letter and its own, you know, all the signatures are on it.[1662.83]